Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cable Cast Post Agenda on Pittsburgh Water's Flood Mitigation Projects for today, April 22nd, 2025. We are joined today by Councilmember Charland, and if we could have our folks from PWSA and the Army Corps of Engineers come on up to the table. Thank you. Great. Oh, yeah, does someone want to come down to this one here?
Side down one?
Yeah, maybe just everyone's side down.
What are we doing? I don't know. It's okay.
Great. So, yeah, so just to sort of start off to say, you know, sort of why we're having this post agenda is it was announced by Pittsburgh Water that there's going to be a, I'll say, a pause on a number of flood mitigation projects around the city, and one of those is in my district in Four Mile Run, and so that's why, obviously, it's of interest to me, but I know that there are a number across the city, so that's, I thought that this would be a good idea. So why don't we have everybody go down the line and introduce yourselves, and then we'll let you, you know, give any presentations or whatnot that you have, and then members can ask questions then. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'm Tony Eguere. I'm the Senior Group Manager for Stormwater for Pittsburgh Water.
I'm Jen Pursidy. I'm the CFO for Pittsburgh Water.
I'm Rebecca Zito, Senior Manager of Public Affairs for Pittsburgh Water.
I'm Rachel Bean, Chief Engineering Officer for Pittsburgh Water.
I am Jen Cristobal. I'm the Planning Section Chief for Army Corps of Engineers.
Hi, my name is Mark Lucheski. I am the Planning Chief for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Pittsburgh District.
Rebecca's bringing up our presentation. So I want to take an opportunity to thank you very much for calling this post agenda and for inviting us to talk about our Stormwater program and all the updates that we can provide to you today. There we go. So on our agenda today, we've gone through the welcome and the introductions. We do want to talk to you all today about our 2025 capital priorities and what makes those priorities in our capital program. Tony will talk to you about our Stormwater program. We'll also tell you our rationale for the projects being placed on hold and also what we're looking forward to, how we can help mitigate that. And then, of course, as we end, we're happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. So as a little bit of background, Pittsburgh Water is a public authority. We serve the public. So you can see kind of right there in the middle, we sit between what would be considered an investor-owned utility and a municipal government. An investor-owned utility has shareholders, they have investors, we have none of that. Every dollar that we collect from our rate payers goes right back into our systems. We have a commitment to protecting public health and the environment, and we also have drivers of investment, those are our drivers of investment, as well as our rate affordability, which is always top of mind for Pittsburgh Water. Our Water Reliability Plan is a once-in-a-generation plan. It is a mandated plan for Pittsburgh Water by our regulators. It is court-ordered. We have a $470 million investment in critical drinking water infrastructure that we plan to undertake here in the next five to eight years. These are projects that will modernize our water system and improve our service reliability. The design work is currently underway for the capstone project for this plan, and that is our clearwell replacement. Our clearwell is the last point in our disinfection, our treatment process at our water treatment plant before it goes into the distribution system and goes into customers' homes. We have also selected construction firms for our Aspomall Pump Station and our Brecken Pump Station. Those are two pump stations that are in need of rehabilitation, as well as our clearwell bypass project, and that is the project that is going to allow us to bypass that clearwell that I just talked about, to be able to do that construction in the near future. We are also in the process of building our new Highland Pump Station, and that station is 78% complete at this point. It is our first building that we've constructed, I believe, in the last 20 years. Our community-led response, so I'm very proud to announce that we have replaced over 12,000 public-led service lines and over 9,000 private-led service lines. We recently had an event that celebrated our removal of our 12,000th lead service line, which was well-attended. We have also consulted with 35 water utilities on lead best practices, and these are utilities that have come to Pittsburgh Water to look at our programs, look at our best practices, and we counsel them when we can. We are also recognized by the U.S. EPA as a national leader in lead service line replacement programs. So now let's take a look at our capital improvement plan drivers. So you can see at that top line there, we have a total investment over the next five years of almost $1.2 billion. There are four programs that make up almost 80% of that capital improvement plan. The Water Reliability Plan that I just spoke to you all about, that is about 30% of our funding and programming for the next five years. Again, that is a mandated program. We have a consent decree that mandates that. We also have our lead service line replacement program, which here in Pittsburgh, we have pledged to get all of the lead out of our system by 2027, and so you can see those numbers there make up another 16% of that capital improvement plan. We also have our small and large diameter water replacement, as well as sewer rehabilitation, along with that large and small and large water main replacement program is also our lead service line replacement program built into that as well. And then while it's not as flashy as the others, our sewer rehabilitation program is something that, you know, is needed as we are stewards of these public assets to ensure that there is no health or safety issues, as well as water quality issues here in Pittsburgh. We have the remaining CIP there, which is 20%, and that's made up of much smaller programs and projects. So now I'll turn it over to Tony to talk about the Stormwater program.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen. So basically, to bring you up to speed on some of the projects that we've completed, a total of 28 Stormwater projects, seven of them are currently in planning stages, two under construction, and total so far, we've spent upwards of $94 million since 2018 that was invested, and you can see a nice spread of the projects across the city. So some of the ongoing projects, kind of going in a little more detail, is the catch basin replacement, about 568 of them have been replaced, and also a lot of the cleaning has taken care of up to 900 tons and change of debris that's been removed. Along the same lines, we're continuing with sewer lining and replacement programs, lining more than 15 miles of sewer, and about one and a half miles have been reconstructed. The green infrastructure project, which we've been doing since after the 2016 Green First Plan, a lot of projects were implemented that you saw on that map, we've been doing ongoing maintenance and inspection to optimize their performance. One of the things we did this past year was bring a lot of that management in-house moving forward. In addition to that, we still face environmental compliance requirements, a lot of it on our outfalls, that outfall to the rivers and streams, and so there's quite a bit of inspection and protective measures, the inspections, especially after events, storm events, to go out, inspect the system, and make sure that we're not impacting water quality in the rivers and streams negatively. In terms of our capital budget, even though a lot of that was ratcheted down, the 2025 is still in the neighborhood of $29 million, and a lot of that includes projects that are currently being constructed, like Braywood, the rapid, Bus Rapid Transit project, the catch basin inlet replacement we've talked about. There is money in there to complete as much as possible the design of the Four Mile Run Stormwater Improvement System, do some planning for Fowler Park with the parks and the city departments. The Oak Ridge Storm Sewer Separation, that one actually has to go forward because we're taking illicit connections out of the system and putting them back in storm sewers. The Sawmill Run watershed improvements, that one is an MPDS permit requirement that we need to complete, and then there are other projects, Southside Flats and Woods Run also earmarked for construction. So the part that is still coming down the pipe is the, what a consent decree, we're still in negotiations with Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Justice, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, and County Health. So there's quite a few alphabet soup regulatory agencies involved. We got a draft consent decree beginning of, towards the end of the year, October, November, but with the change in Washington, D.C. leadership, that's kind of come to a halt for a little bit until the current, the new administration figures out their priority of enforcement. While they're doing that, we're still moving forward and doing evaluation of the capacity of the sewer system, conducting water quality evaluations, as well as putting together operational maintenance metrics that we think we're going to need to run the system anyway. So those are things that we're currently moving forward with. We've also submitted to them a draft operational maintenance plan, and we've worked tirelessly in the last, I want to say, 18 months doing flow monitoring, data collection, to expand our hydraulic model. So the hydraulic model that Alcoa San used to do their wet water planning, the city, Pittsburgh Water has expanded that to a much higher level of detail to help us understand the sewer capacity within the system. So that work is still ongoing even as we speak. So some of the things that we're keeping in mind as guiding principles, even though work has been suspended, we're thinking that we still need to maintain the existing infrastructure. That responsibility doesn't go away. We still need to work with people who have either flooding issues, whether they be basement flooding or overland, to the extent that those are reported to us through the right channel, Pittsburgh Water will still do the investigation to confirm where the problem is. Is it from the person's lateral, or is it something that's with our system so that we can move forward with it? We're also proactively seeking third-party funding to try to fill the gap that's been left with the reduction in the CIP funds we're talking about, and see if there are ways to actually advance the projects that are on hold. We've also committed to continue to proactively communicate with the stakeholders who are impacted with the projects in question, still trying to figure out best ways to go out and do community meetings and bring them up to speed, what's going on, and continue to maintain that two-way communication so it doesn't look like we kind of ran away, but at least the problem with things like that is when there's a void of information, people will fill it in with the wrong information, and that's what we don't want to have happen. So projects that are moving forward, the Southside Flats Sewer Separation, the other one, the next one, we have partnered projects with the Pittsburgh Rapid Transit folks that we, regional transit, sorry, we have projects with them, as well as Pendat, we've partnered with Pendat, we're putting up the funds, they actually have put together the projects and the contractor to do some of the stream restoration to help us with our permit. The Woods Run Phase Two, Alcoa San is helping us with the grow funding on that one, so that project is, the intent is to move forward with the construction of it. MS4 Compliance ones, those are the two sites, we're on the same permit with the city, and those two sites are currently under construction, Glass Run and Short Hills Creek. And like I mentioned earlier, we're completing design on the Oak Ridge project and Fowler Park. Fowler Park is a Phase One overall analysis that we're doing to see how, whatever the projects that we come up with can still work for the park locally, as well as help bring extra stormwater to that park from neighboring, from the neighboring impervious areas. Next slide. So the main reason, we're thinking the things that has caused the projects to go on hold, the biggest one really is the funding side of it. And then there are also permitting challenges, and as most of you know, post-COVID, there's been a lot of escalation of construction costs, and those continue to where we have to consistently look at effectiveness of our project designs, look at ways to cut costs, if you will, moving forward with those projects. The other thing that is helping us, or we're thinking we're going to look at, is how do these projects fit in with the water plan that we need to do for CSO control? How do those dovetail? How does it fit in with any of our Stormwater strategic planning that we've already done, as well as Alcoa San's wet water program that they're doing under their consent decree? So that's another aspect that we're continuing to look at, even though it feels like everything's stopped, there's still work being done behind the scenes. They want, one of the projects that has been front and center, obviously, is the Four Mile Run project. We may go through during the Q and A, we might handle some additional information on that, but right now, just to say that the project is at 90% design, a lot of the environmental green infrastructure type of things were removed for various reasons that we won't go into at this point, but that is basically now a stormwater-only project with the intent of addressing flooding, typically like a 10-year flood was the design for that. We're looking very closely at constructability analysis. There's a lot of, when you think about what we're doing with the tunneling, we're going under an old railroad bridge going through Greenfield Avenue, which is very crowded, and then we're running into a lot of obstacles on Second Avenue, some of it are Verizon conduits and things like that that may need to be moved in the process, so we're making sure that a lot of these things are taken care of, looked at before we go to final design and actually bid it, so we don't get in trouble with change orders and things like that. The one thing that has hampered us is once those environmentally friendly parts of the project were kind of removed, you reduce the CSO overflow, which is the metric that Alcoa San uses to give the funding. So it brought us below the funding threshold of the $10 million, so Alcoa San has temporarily eliminated that for now. They're still asking us, once we finish the design, to come back and see if something can be remedied. We're not sure any of that will happen, but it's still a door that they've left open for conversation. But the projects have been completed within that Four Mile Run region, the early action projects that were done on the Bridle Path, that has been very effective, from what I understand, from the people who live very close to that area. The second thing that we think may actually be very impactful, but we don't know the extent of the impact, is the reconstruction of the M29 outfall. There was a gate, like a five-foot-high gate that was blocking, that was used to keep flow, the river out of the sewer system. That gate has been removed and now has a flap gate, which acts differently from a hydraulic standpoint. So one of the things we're thinking, and then a lot of debris was also removed, because you have a gate like that, it slows down flows, drops out a lot of stuff in the sewer. So we've also removed a lot of debris when that project is constructed. So we're having one of our hydraulic engineers go through and do some evaluation now to look at, to see if that improved anything. Fortunately, we haven't had really drastic storms since that project was completed, so we can judge by a level of flooding that has happened to date, but we want to do hydraulic evaluation just to confirm if our suspicions are correct. So that's underway as we speak. So looking forward, the thought process and approach is to seek more grant funding. Again, we don't know how these going to play out, but it's something that we are trying to look forward to doing and identifying any intermediary measures that we can, so for example, just that evaluation I was talking about with the Four Mile Run project, and then working collaboratively with the council offices or anybody else that will have us to help beat the bushes, as they say, and see if we can come up with any kind of funding that will be helpful in the projects that we're planning to do. And I think this is the questions and...
Yeah, thank you. So we've also been joined by Councilwoman Strasburger. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say before I turn it over to members? No? Okay, great. Well, Councilman Charland, I'll let you go first.
You know, I don't really have anything specific, because I think most of the presentation was about the Four Mile Run projects. Like I said, I am concerned about the projects in Southside. I would like to have another discussion about that at some point in the future, but nothing more for today, you know, and I appreciate your ability to juggle as things from the federal government change dramatically, and you have to react accordingly, so, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Well, I apologize and regret that another meeting kept me from coming to see the presentation. As a board member, I have been briefed on this project and the trajectory it's taken, so I'm not unfamiliar. I guess my only question would be, is there anything that you think the city can do as we have a whole wide, not just on this project, but we have a whole sort of citywide stormwater management plan? Is there's any more that the city can do to partner, to assist, to help to achieve the same goals that we all have, which is a reduction in flooding, better quality of life for neighborhoods, mitigating particularly the flood zones like Four Mile Run, and eliminating sewage overflow into our rivers?
Start, when we were talking to Councilman Charland and DPW about the Southside Park project, we realized that some of the work that DPW was planning for Southside Park could also be impacted by us putting the Southside Park project on hold. So I think what we had talked about was trying to figure out the types of mitigations that we could do, we could do as part of the project, like in phases, and work kind of closely with DPW to see where there were opportunities where the projects could kind of mesh up. One of the things that Friends of Southside Park would like to bring forward is the playground that is within the portion of Southside Park that I think is like right off of Arlington Boulevard at the top, near the football field. So there's a playground that they have planned to build there, and so that's something that they would like to move forward. So I think it sounded as though there was an opportunity to look at, look at the possibility of phasing, so where we could find opportunities to work with DPW to phase, I think, would be useful.
Does that leverage funds in a particularly strategic way? Sometimes, maybe it's project-dependent? Okay.
Yeah, I think that we would need to look at the capital program to see where we would have opportunities to leverage anything.
No, I'm interested in kind of hearing the back and forth between the chair of this post-agenda and Pittsburgh Water representative, so I'll leave my questions at that for now.
Yeah, thanks. So I guess my first question, just to summarize again for folks, so what are the projects that are paused? The list of projects that are paused?
We had a list, the major ones were the Stewart Avenue project, Four Mile Run. I'm trying to go by off the top of my head.
MLK Field.
I'm sorry? MLK, yeah, MLK, we've already met with the gardeners, and there's one other one that escapes me now, but that's all.
This is Southside Park.
Southside Park. So there's four projects altogether.
So I'm obviously very familiar with the Four Mile Run. I live in Four Mile Run, so I'm very familiar with the flooding impacts in that neighborhood. What are the flooding impacts in the other three that have been put on pause?
They, the Stewart Avenue one for sure is, the flooding, it's similar problems. There was some road, they had swells in the system before, and then there was some road repairs that were done that basically eliminated that efficient way of getting the stormwater out, and that resulted in some localized flooding that were also, the plan was to alleviate with the new project.
And for that one, does that affect, are there residents that are affected by that one? So similar, like?
Oh, yeah, but it's not the same level. The Four Mile Run one is fairly specific, because it's more like a bowl area down by Big Jims. Most of those are up a little higher, but it just, it doesn't convey the water out efficiently enough, so it backs up on the streets, and also some of them impacts their homes.
Okay. And then what about MLK Field and Southside Park? What happens there when it floods?
MLK Field primarily, I mean, Southside Park primarily is a CSO program, so I'm not sure it's so much a flooding issue. MLK, I'm not sure right off.
Yeah, MLK Field was primarily looking at how we could retain water, and so the construction, the design plans were to install retention basins beneath a portion of the field, and the main concerns there was proper coordination with the gardeners so that their, so that their growing season would not be as impacted. But we were really looking at trying to retain, retain and hold back water.
Oh, I see. Okay, so those were not like flood, like flood issues per se, it was more, okay. So I guess, and I'll ask some questions that I also, that I do know some of the answers to, as well as some that I don't. So just from, so in Four Mile Run, I believe 2019 was the last very bad flood?
Yes. Um, no, it was being...
There was the 2021.
A '21, that's right.
Yeah, '21 was the last one we had a picture of.
So 2021.
Yeah.
And just for anyone listening, you know, in the run, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that is that when you get a very heavy rain, the water in the sewers comes down from Greenfield, right? And it overwhelms the pipes, and what we get are manhole covers blowing off and literally the entire neighborhood from Acorn Street down to the playground and Four Mile Run Road, filling with sewage. And we have a lot of folks who live there, and, you know, it's, it's not a great situation, right? And it depends on how long the rain lasts, but basically it fills up, so it's like a lake, and then once the rain stops, it drains relatively, I mean, maybe 15, 20 minutes, something like that, for it to drain out, but we have had incidences, there was, I can't remember what year this was, but it happens very quickly. So one year, for example, there were customers coming out of Big Jims, and a man and his son had to scramble and to the top of their car, and the fire department had to come, and in fact, the fire department had a hard time reaching them because it was like they were out sort of stuck in this lake that is what happens there. So, yeah, so, you know, this has sort of had a long history with the neighborhood and this project, and obviously, just, you know, this project for a number of years, for about six years, was tied, at least the permits, right, were tied to the Mon Oakland Connector Project, and, you know... the understanding from the community, which, you know, is, even now, even then I'm on council, I sort of have a little bit more of an understanding of like how things work and whatnot. I still am not, you know, I'm still a little on the, on the side of the conspiracy side of, you know, back in 2015, the city announced this project to build a road, 20, you know, $26 million was the original budget over five, you know, over, over the years for this project to build this road through Shenley Park and through Four Mile Run to connect the universities in Oakland to a new development at the Hazelwood Green. And of course, the residents in the run were beside themselves that this project was happening, but their storm water project was not happening. And that, you know, that, that, you know, the city, of course, like we're all lumped in together, right? PWSA, the city, right? It's all taxpayer money. But that somehow there was money to build this road for the universities and the development next door, but there was no money to fix this flooding problem that had been going on. I mean, this is a community where people are, you know, replacing their boilers over and over again, just constant flooding. And so folks were upset. And then through the course of the six years where they, where residents fought the city over the road, you know, then it was like, oh, well, we're gonna do the project, the flood project, but it was tied to the road. And residents felt, again, I said, and, and I felt at the time, I mean, I'm still a resident, but at the time I was, you know, just a, just a neighbor, felt that folks in the run were being, that their, their sort of, that their flood project was sort of being held hostage, so to speak, by this road. That it was either like, either you just shut up and accept this road if you want to get your flood project done. Or you don't get your flooding, right? Like, you know, it's, it's both. And, and in the permitting plans, I know this is painful. I know this is like, this is a long, you know, but, you know, over the, and then, and then, you know, and then in the permitting, you know, it was very clear that the road was part of the permit for the flood, right? And so sort of underscoring this theory that it was like, either you get, either you do this road that the city wants or you don't get your flooding. And, you know, the residents pushed back on that and pushed back on those permits. And, you know, lots of, lots of community organizing was done around that. And finally, finally, after six years, right? We got a new mayor and that mayor who had come down and, you know, made this promise to us to stop this road project, kept his word, stopped the road project. And then now, lo and behold, the flood project is canceled as well. So you can understand the line that is drawn between those two things. So, you know, and I understand that I, I don't have, you know, I'm not on the PWSA board. I don't have control over what is done, what isn't done. So I can just ask questions about, you know, from, from residents. So in terms of, you know, what's happening now in the run, like there, I know, I understand that there was some work done on the Bridle Path. I will say that since 2021, there's still, like when we get a heavy rain, there is flooding, but it comes out of Shenley. It's not, it's not necessarily coming up out of the sewage. That's not what's happening. But we are still absolutely getting tons of mud that comes down from Shenley Park, like down the zigzag trail. So that, you know, I mean, it's on a heavy rain. It's like that whole section going into Panther Hollow is just covered in mud. The playground is covered in mud. So, you know, I don't, I don't know if I would say that the, that the projects up on the Bridle Trail are necessarily. I, I mean, I don't know, again, if those projects were intended to do, but, but that is certainly still an issue. I, I've had, you know, working with Rachel Ramp, you know, I will say very responsive, you know, when I call and say, hey, we've had a big storm, like can someone come down the run and like clean out these storm drains and, and whatnot? So I do appreciate that. But I guess, you know, just to kind of start off, you know, with the questions, so, so, you know, one, one thing that came up is sort of, you know, what's the difference between then and now? Like what, you know, you mentioned that, you know, the Alka Sand project may help like the, you know, the, the M29 outfall may have an impact. So I, I want to let you all talk a little bit about that. So what is it that brought you to the place, aside from funding? Right? Aside from funding, brought you to the place of like, we don't need, or, or this is not urgent, as urgent as the other flood projects that are still moving forward?
I mean, the only, it's, it's really funding. Honestly, it's really funding. The designing and the planning was moving along those lines, even with the Alka Sand project. But it's really the funding for the construction of the.
So, so why, do we know why? Can you explain why Alka Sand pulled the 10 million? Because I know that the permits changed. I'll, I'll let you talk a little bit about that, sort of the, the, what happened with the permit. And I've, I've, I've heard this, but I'll let you go into.
So the, I never can tell what the acronym GROW means, greening, uh, the GROW project, they have a program where they fund reduction of storm water in the, into the system. Especially if that storm water is shown to reduce the amount of combined sewer overflow that actually ends up in the streams. So when we did the initial analysis, it demonstrated that we're more than 20 million gallons, maybe closer to 30 million gallons a year of combined sewer overflow that was reduced from the rivers by doing the daylighting portion that the Mon Oakland roadway would have been part of. So if we had daylighted the stream, deepened the Panther Hollow Lake and dam and did all of those projects, it would have resulted in, plus the storm sewer, it would have resulted in north of 20, 29 million gallons a year of combined sewer overflow. And based on the analysis, they were able to say, okay, this makes sense for us to fund as part of those projects. When we took that part of the project out in order to move forward, it basically left us with just a storm sewer. And storm sewers by definition don't really reduce that much CSO because they don't start, they don't kick in until like, you know, two inches, three inches of rain. What they were looking at was 24 hour stream, right, that was going into their system. We were gonna take that out. Now that's still going into the system and we don't, we don't have the reduction. So then we were not able to show up to 20 million gallons a year of CSO combined sewer overflow reduced.
So, so again, and I was very familiar with those permits, right? I, you know, at the time, the road going away had no impact as far as I could tell on, I mean, and, and the original plan was daylight the stream, right? So along the railroad track, on the soccer field, there would have been a daylit stream, you know, that used, the, the run, right? Would have been daylit and then, you know, so why couldn't that be done? I mean, the road went away, but that didn't, that was a separate.
The, the road going away would have increased the cost of the project in the sense that we were sharing backfilling. So we're moving dirt from one to the other to help with the backfilling. So the road going away increased the cost, but that wasn't the only reason. The other reason was the getting permitting from the state on the actual daylighted stream. There were a lot of technical differences of opinion. The state didn't like the approach we were using and the way they were recommending that we do it. It came down, should you have a liner under that stream or not? We thought you needed a liner. If you have a liner, you can maintain the water. State says, no, we don't want a liner. If you take the liner out, the water is gonna disappear. You're just gonna have a dry chump. So that was, that was another point of technical difference. And then the final one was at the, at the lake point. The dam that holds the lake back right now is sitting on the right of way for the railroad. And so the railroad gets involved. Railroad says, no, we're not going to give you guys a permit some, we, you can't. Once you start moving the dirt there, you have to get it totally off our right of way. And that was the third and final piece that there was no way we could do all those, meet all those different requirements within the timeline we thought we needed to do the, the project between the railroad and getting the, the state to work out the liner issue. And then with the roadway going away, those three pieces, basically we said, okay, what can we do that still would help flooding, that still, and the consensus was we could still look at the storm sewer piece and just concentrate on that. And once we made that decision, the $10 million, which would, it wasn't upfront money. We paid, Pittsburgh Water would have paid it upfront and then got a reimbursement from Alka Sand.
So I guess, explain to me more about the liner. Why couldn't we do, why couldn't we just update it and do it the way the state thought we should do it?
The, the amount of water that's coming off is very, so the channel is set up when you get a hundred year storm, that, that impoundment is gonna fill. So four, five inches of rain, that impoundment is gonna fill. It's gonna go over a spillway and all of that water was gonna end up in this channel, right? All the way down and that was a nice way to channel it. But when there's no rain, there was a continuous amount of stream that would be going through that channel, but it's very slow flow. So barely where you probably couldn't see it. If you don't have a liner, it'll be dry. It'll just infiltrate into the ground and you wouldn't see it. And so it'll be a dry bed. Pretty soon, all the stumps, tree stumps they were gonna put in and out, all of that would die and it would actually be more of an eyesore than it would be a living stream, which was the intention. So that difference of opinion in, in technical approach basically said you couldn't do the dry bed.
Okay. And then explain to me about the railroad, because I thought that had to do with Panther Hollow Lake.
It had to do with the lake being deepened and to do it, we had to move the embankment, which the state considered a dam. And the toll of that dam, we don't have a map, but if you looked at the map the way it is now, the current spillway and the, and the toll of the dam is right on railroad right of way. Something you probably could have done in the 40s and 50s or whenever the dam was built, but you couldn't do now.
So which railroad is it that was not, did not allow us to? Like was it CSX or?
Yes, yes, it was CSX.
CSX?
Yes.
So just so I'm clear, what did CSX say we couldn't do?
We have, we would have to get the spillway off the right of way and we would have to move the embankment, the dam off the right of way, which means we'll have to push all that back off the right of way.
When you say back, you mean like toward the lake?
Yes, towards where the lake is now, push all that. So the entire lake would have to be moved back up a little bit. That whole embankment would have to be pushed off the right of way and the spillway would have to be located off the right of way.
And would that have been then connected to the stream?
Sitting here right now, I'm not even sure. Just it, it, the, everything I just described just adds, again, you just keep adding to the cost of the project.
So I'm still not totally clear. So this issue with the liner, okay, so let's just say, like, was this a, I don't understand the $10 million difference. Like, so we lost $10 million because we took away the green infrastructure that would have happened next, you know, along the soccer field, right? Along.
Yes, the $10 million we were getting for the performance of the project.
Right. And the performance would have, was, the, the performance was there when you had the store, the, the green infrastructure elements of it that were, that were like, you know.
Yes, everything was there. With, once that went away, you rerun the models and you do the analysis, you don't, you don't get the performance you get from a combined sewer overflow reduction, not a flooding. The flooding remediation didn't change.
Right. But what I'm asking is, so I, I understand about the lake. I understand that like shifting Panther Hollow Lake, you know, I don't know, whatever, like 10 feet or whatever it would have had to have been. I get that that is, you know, complicated and moving the dam or, or whatever. But, but the stream, I still don't understand. So there's, the state says no liner. You say there should be a liner. That seems overcomeable. I mean, we can ask our Army Corps folks. I don't know if you have any thoughts on liner versus no liner.
It depends on the intention for the stream.
Yes.
I mean, it, yes.
The, the intention was to have a stream, to have a stream flow.
Right. Yeah, I remember. And it was gonna be like the little, and it was gonna be nice. Right, right.
And the only way that was gonna happen would be if the water didn't disappear on the, on the ground. And then you have a dry bed. That was the, the fear was for, because if not, then if you have a dry bed, then all the root balls and all of those nice looking features that we were gonna put in, all of that would be dead within a matter of, you know, a year and a half, right? And then you have to go dig it all up. You basically have an open channel swell.
Well, so again, I mean, and that's sort of what I'm thinking is why could that, I mean, if it's, again, like the aesthetics aside, right?
Yes.
Forget about that part. But if just along the railroad track on the, on the park side, if you just had a large, you know, I don't know, fill it with, again, I'm not an engineer.
It would have been a large swell that would have been basically, the, the issue is the original intent wouldn't have been met. And at that time, I don't know if people remember this, but that was one of the hits Pittsburgh Water was taking was we do, we give you this nice graphic, the green infrastructure is beautiful when it works and you get it at the peak time. But when it's dry season or it's, you know, it's off season, it doesn't look nice to a lot of people. And we, we were getting complaints from people how, you know, these things look nice and, you know, it doesn't look like the pictures you showed us. And so the, the risk of doing one of these where the dry beds would also be empty and all the other stuff. It was like, at this point, let's put that aside and concentrate on the storm sewer. It was really more an expediency type thing. Let's go with this storm sewer and see if we can get that designed and built.
Okay. So, so taking that out, I mean, whether, and I'm, the aesthetic part, I mean, the issue is the flooding, right? Like that's the issue for the folks in the run. If there was sort of an ugly, you know, whatever, catch basin or something along the edge of the, I don't think that, I mean, obviously something so people don't fall in it. But other than that, I, I don't imagine that that would have been an issue. So so we don't do that and we lose $10 million on the overall project. Would that $10 million allow us to do the, the stuff, the, the gray infrastructure?
So the, the $10 million, the, the reason I, I hate for us to focus on it, the $10 million is money we get reimbursed. So that, that money is money Pittsburgh Water spends upfront regardless. So you get, you get some of it back, great. So that was not, it wasn't a deal breaker as such. It just, it was just, all we were doing was listing out all the things that happened sequentially that the money went away. Of course it helps. You can't, if you can get $10 million, you take it.
Well, so would the $10 million from Alka Sand? I mean, would that have been $10 million for the whole project, including the gray? Or would it only have been allowed to be used for the, for the green infrastructure?
It would have been for the total project, the way it was done. It wasn't a, because the total project was evaluated. So you, you doing, you evaluating the, the green infrastructure part and the storm sewer part. And those both combined gave you a performance that warranted the $10 million. The green infrastructure off the table, the performance didn't warrant that.
So again, I mean, I'm coming back to, can you just do this green infrastructure? So what, well, how short are we on budget? Because I, I can't remember. It changed a lot. Like there's, I, it's some, it was like, I don't, I don't even remember. It's been so many years. Like it was like 20 million or 40 million. Like how, how, how many millions of dollars were allocated to this project originally? And then where did that change? How did that change along the road? Maybe that's a question for Jen.
Yeah. So right now in our budget, we have enough to complete the design. As far as construction dollars are concerned, I'm kind of in the same boat you are. I thought that the construction was upwards of $30 million.
Yes.
And so that's where our delta lies right now. Um, and so that's where our delta lies right now. Currently, we're spending thirty fi- thirty million dollars in our CIP for. Uh, stormwater improvements around the city, um, but we don't have that additional thirty million uh, to be able to do this construction.
But what happened in the meantime, because I mean, we, I mean, we were, again, this is years ago, but community meeting after community meeting, we were told that the money was there, that the project was happening. What happened to the money?
Because our priorities shifted to some of those mandated projects that we spoke about earlier. So uh, the water reliability plan, which has, it's a kind of a Rubik's cube of projects that need to happen so that we can get to that clearwell. The clearwell is a hundred year old structure, it's a single point of failure in our system and we must address it. Um, and so to do a number of these projects, even the, you know, building of the Highland Pump Station. Um, had to happen before we could then get to that clearwell. So there's a number of projects. You know, I think we put up there four hundred and seventy million dollars that need to go towards these projects, and I don't even believe that includes the clearwell costs as well.
But I mean, isn't there also a mandate that we, that we separate our sewage and our, and our regular water? So that we don't have sewage going into our rivers?
I don't know, if you want to take that, I'm happy to.
Yeah, we're, we're still, that's the consent decree.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're still negotiating that. So that has not been signed formally. Uh, to have us do the combined sewer uh, work. That's, that's the one that the consent decree was still going through.
Okay, so, all right, so basically there was money that was just moved out of this project over. Whenever. When was that money moved? A number of years ago?
Well, this, this current budget cycle, so twenty-four for twenty-five was when we needed to make some really hard decisions. And move money away from certain projects, yes.
Okay, so that was, is that when you all sent the letter, or was it?
Yeah, we sent the letter, I believe it was two months.
End of February.
End of February, yes.
Okay.
To alert um, community members and other stakeholders of our intentions.
The estimated project costs also have increased over time. Tony can speak to that too. The costs of, the estimated costs have also increased, as you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, that has increased.
Sure, I mean, it's been a lot of years that the project didn't get done, so um. How much money has PWSA spent so far on this project?
This project, um, I, I didn't, wasn't able to look at the final numbers, but the last set of numbers that I had. Was in the neighborhood of eight point seven million dollars, give or take. And that includes um, the half a million dollars for the construction that I was talking about for the bridle. Uh, the rest of it has been um, the, all the different planning and final designs that we've done to date.
So eight point seven million has been spent, so. On a project that, what, what's the current estimate to do the whole, to, to do the project, thirty million?
For the, for the construction piece.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I'm sa- I'm just looking, so it was forty, okay, so it was forty million.
That was what was allocated altogether, including the design.
And what would it cost if we were to add back in just this, this, you know, daylighting of the stream just along, I mean, taking out the bells and whistles of, you know. Whatever, beautification stuff, but just to do.
Just to do the daylighting. It. It, it's a problem, I can give you a number, but it's a real problematic number. The number we had initially was in the neighborhood of five million dollars for that piece.
Mm-hmm.
The reason it's a problematic number is, it's a number that was not approved by any of the agencies. So we don't know what level of effort would need to be done to get them to approve anything. Or even to get, uh, if we have to do stuff with CSX to get them to sign off. So that's hard to estimate.
Um. So you mentioned earlier that we have had, so we have not had any big, so I mean, and I will, I'll say again, since twenty twenty-one. We have not had one of these mega floods in the run.
Yes, we've had, we've had huge storms.
We've had lots of mudslides come down from the park. Um, but we have not had, so have we not had a storm that would have caused, is that because we just haven't had the rain for it?
We haven't he- had the, it wasn't just having the rain, it's having the rain that centered over the run, we haven't had that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to be able to say, but like I'm saying, with, that's part of the reason we started doing the evaluation. Because we can, in a hydraulic model, you can artificially set those storms in place. And then ask the question, how badly would it have flooded? So that's part of the analysis we're doing to see if that, those changes uh, actually helped and we didn't know.
Mm-hmm. Um. So I mean, what, cause see, that's the thing, is so for folks down there, right, like my neighbors, um. I mean, you can, you can see when you lay out the, the history of the thing, they basically feel like. You know, they didn't back down on the road that uh. The mayor wanted to, the mayor at the time wanted to build through a public park, right? For, a road for, for private shuttles to run through a public park and their community, right? So what they were fighting, just to be clear, was not having those UPMC and, or not UPMC, I shouldn't say that, but you know, but whatever, like those shuttles that you see in Oakland. Uh, running through, right through their neighborhood every, you know, ten minutes or whatever it was gonna be. Um, and then also through their park where people bike and play soccer and et cetera, right? Um. And because they fought that and said no, that the ci- you know. That it was decided then that they just didn't get their flooding, right? They were mad that they, I, I just, I just want to make that clear, and I feel like that is. And I get that there's sort of like the idea that there's not a conspiracy, but it sure feels like a conspiracy, right? If you're, if, if you're living down there and you say, my city doesn't care about me. Right? Like my Pittsburgh water that I pay lots of money to every month for my water doesn't care about me. So what? What can we offer? Right? Like what can we do if we get another big rain? I mean, can we offer to pay to replace people's boilers? What can we do? Can we offer to put um, backflow valves in people's basements, like? You know, we've got four hundred and, four hundred and thirty thousand left on design. Four hundred and thirty-two thousand of eight point seven million that has been spent. What do you think?
That's something we would have to look into. It's, yeah, that's something we would have to look into, it's not something I can give you any answer on right here, but. Promise to take that back and, and take a look at that for you, what some options could be.
I mean, is there, you know, we have a field down there, we have all, I mean, again, I'm just like sort of spitballing like ideas, like what can be, I mean, there, it feels like there has to be something between. Everything and nothing, right? I don't know. I don't know, the Army Corps, do you guys have any thoughts overall? I don't know how familiar you are with this project in this, this area.
We're uh, thank you, um, we're pretty familiar with Four Mile Run. We've been approached a couple of times to look at projects there. Uh, Section Two Nineteen Program at one point in uh, Section Two Nineteen is our environmental infrastructure program. It allows us to deal with water and stormwater infrastructure. Uh, and a Section Two O Six Program, which is, I'm just spitting out numbers to you, but uh, those are sections of our Water Resource Development Acts that allow us to uh, provide assistance. So Section Two O Six is a, an ecosystem restoration um, continuing authority. And so um. We have programs to help, um, the environmental infrastructure program, uh, there are two that um, Allegheny County. As a whole is um, has available to it. It's the Section Two Nineteen, as I mentioned earlier, and Section Three Thirteen. The difference between uh, the two is that Section Two Nineteen is more of a turnkey type program. Where a municipality would come to us and we would do the design or the construction. Uh, Section Three Thirteen is reimbursable. Uh, which that allows the local municipality or the um, utility to do the work. And then we would reimburse them uh, a portion of that. Both of those programs are seventy-five percent uh, federal contribution. And so what that means is for every dollar that uh, an entity would spend, we would reimburse seventy-five cents of that. We've, we've worked with um, the Mon Watershed Group, Mon Water Group, uh, which is uh, Four Mile Run. Um, and so we're um, we've put together, uh, we've tried to put together a regional watershed group. Uh, with the watersheds of South Pittsburgh to discuss the different stormwater issues in the city of Pittsburgh. We've uh, moved that through with our Planning Assistance to States Program, that's a technical assistance program. We also have uh, different CAP authorities in the latest Worda, Worda uh, Twenty Twenty Four, which uh, will help us deal with stormwater. And it also, I believe, allows for reimbursement for what we would call a non-federal sponsor to, to do the project. So I, I think that we have a, a number of tools that would um, that would benefit entities looking to take advantage of them.
So I mean, is that up to the Mon Water, I mean, the Mon Water Project being um. You know, one person trying to start, you know, versus, so what, what, what can PWSA do? Cause I don't, I don't want to put this on the Mon Water Project.
Oh, no, it certainly not, I've just uh.
Yeah.
I, I made mention of that just to.
Sure, sure, no, I get it, I, you know, yeah.
Um, that person does a lot.
Yes, that person does a lot.
So it would simply be uh, PWSA come into the Corps of Engineers and putting in a letter of intent, saying we'd like to partner with the Corps of Engineers and working with um, working with us to resolve this issue. And then we would be able to seek funding. Um, I would recommend that uh, the elected representatives be involved as well, just to let them know that um, the federal government is involved and. While we have the programs available, the elected representatives are responsible for the funding.
Um, the other question I have is, so um. PennDOT is also um, and, and it's, it, we, we don't know yet what the project will entail, whether it's a rehabilitation or a replacement. See, just the run, I mean, we just sort of get it from all sides, but um, you know, three seventy-six is crumbling and falling. Pieces of it are falling on the folks who live down in the run, uh. But that's of course a major project, so has there been any communication with PennDOT about ways that that project, which obviously, you know, lots and lots of money being put into that. Could also help to address?
The, the communication we've had with them has been the uh, through their public involvement sessions that they've held.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that have come, that's basically um, to the extent we've had it to now, and they're still working through their um. Preliminary design to get a sense of how much the flow rates are gonna change from what they had before, and that was the conversation, extent of the conversation. Last time we tried, very early in the process to get them involved, this would have been twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Having a meeting with them, the pushback from them was that they didn't have any money uh, themselves to add to it, so that was their uh, story at that time. But now we're just looking to make sure if the flows are increasing in any way, then it won't be a question of you don't have any money, it's how much can you actually work with us?
I mean, I'm just sort of wondering, even, I mean, even just the field, right? We call it the Big Jim's Field, it's, you know, called Four Mile Run Park, right? Uh, that is city property, not, not all of it, but much of it is city property, I mean. That's sort of like the center of the lake that forms, if there's anything that can be done, even just under that, I mean, I know, you know, I, I'm not trying to oversimplify things, but.
I mean, there, there've been alternatives that have been considered before, but. I think a lot of, it just focused on the stor- on the storm sewer for now, but it may be time to.
So is there, that's what I mean, I mean, that's, it's like, I, i- is there money to do, uh, so I, I, you know, so. Thirty, forty million, whatever, was moved to other projects, but is there money that can, you know, I mean, maybe. Maybe um, I don't know, just something that when the water, or should the water start coming up out of? You know, when the, the storm drains blow off, can we put something on the sides of, I mean, again, I, I'm not the engineer, right? But so that water does not just rise and create a lake. Um, anyway, I just, so, you know, I, the, there's definitely frustration. Um, and I know that, and I appreciate that you all are gonna come down to the run, it's not gonna be a fun meeting for anybody. But um, I would. I guess I, my, you know, all I can do is ask questions, unfortunately, I wish that there was more that I could do. Um, I guess I can reach out, you know, I have a board member here. I would like to see some of this money, I mean, you know, money that was moved to go back to doing something rather than nothing, right? Cause that, that just doesn't feel, it doesn't feel fair. And it doesn't feel right, right? Like, you know, this is a neighborhood. And hopefully, you know, we don't have, but, but also I would like, you know, before, my recommendation would be before you come to the neighborhood. Before you come and sort of have this conversation with no, without answers with the community. To do some of these things, right? Like, run your model, like, does, has, I mean, that's what I've been sort of wondering this whole time. Has the, and, does the M twenty-nine, did that kind of fix it, right? Is that part of it, or is it just that we haven't had the rain?
That's absolutely the intention for the public meeting, to have that resolved first before.
And also acknowledge, you know, and, and, and maybe come with some idea, because, you know. Again, the mud, and that, and that is not sewage, that's just mud coming down from Shenley Park, and we have houses along Naylor. I mean, I know for a fact that some of the residents, or at least one of the residents on Naylor, has filed a claim with the city of Pittsburgh. Because of all the debris and whatnot that comes down into their, onto their property and is ruining their basement just constantly out of Shenley Park, right? Cause Naylor's right on the back there. Um, so, you know, come with some, some type of solutions for that. We have lots of, that's the thing about the run, is we have all, I mean, in terms of green infrastructure, and I don't know, you know, I know that, you know, maybe green infrastructure isn't as effective as everyone. Wishes that it were, I don't know, but we have lots of places in the run where there's just a big wide area with nothing in it, right? Um. So, and, you know, and we have streets and whatever, we don't have major parking issues on, on our main streets, you know, so. Just to come with some ideas to the community. I mean, I would love for you to come to the community and say, we voted to give the money back. And we're just gonna do the flood mitigation project, but not if the, you know, not if the M twenty-nine did the trick.
Yeah, oh yeah.
You know, not if the big Alka San, what's it called? It was the Big Dig in Boston, I think was it, what, what are we calling it?
Tunnels.
The tun- whatever the, right, I mean, again. Um, anyway, just if, if, if there's anything else that anyone, had any last thoughts?
I mean, other, other than the, the analysis that we're talking about, making sure to uh, have those runs, and then the questions that you've provided. That we have a, a sense of what those answers will be before the community meeting.
Yeah.
Um, that, from our side of it too, that was part of the hope of this, to get some of that early warning.
Yeah, I mean, just, cause I, you know, I mean, just to, to keep in mind, you know, around the city, we've got. You know, we've got little intersections in Squirrel Hill and Point Breeze that have like full-on stormwater management on just a tiny little intersection, right? Like storm, like I'd say, looks like a million dollars infrastructure, maybe, you know, maybe three quarters of a million dollars of infrastructure. Just on one little, one tiny little cross street, right? But the run has giant flooding and they have nothing. So, anyway, I'll leave it at that. Yes?
Well, I want to thank everyone for being here today. Um, and I, as a, as a member of the Board of Pittsburgh Water. I have been party to the conversations that, and the extreme heartburn. I have been party to the conversations that, and the extreme heartburn that has taken place when asking these exact same questions. Can't we, you know, this has been a perennial issue. Residents in the run have suffered, is there anything that can be done? And it's, 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 it's just a lose-lose situation when you have, when you're faced up against decades, nearly a century of disinvestment. You're, you have to make hard decisions when there are mandates to either repair our single point of failure infrastructure, our ABC project, Aspen Wall Brecken and Clearwell Project, right? Which serves like the entire customer base of Pittsburgh Water or other projects that residents in the run, residents in these other stormwater project areas have been waiting for, for, for years and years and years. It's never an easy, it's never an easy decision. And I've witnessed the heartburn that has taken kind of these difficult decisions, the heartburn that Pittsburgh Water employees and leadership have, have experienced in having to contend with this. And I think we've all been asking the questions, is there anything can be, can be done? Has, you know, have, have the interventions that have taken place done enough? What more can be done? I, what I hear today, what I've heard in the years that have led up to this is, you know, everything that will be done, that can be done, will be done. It's just a matter of sequencing and, and a matter of prioritization. And, you know, when you, when you're thinking about tens of thousands of customers who, anything that could happen to reduce the ability to provide clean drinking water to tens of thousands of customers or, you know, a project that a lot of residents have been waiting for, and then a mandate on top of that, like, that's a hard decision, but that's one that had to be made. I'm glad that there seems to be some, you know, some additional information that was gathered today, that's very helpful. I hope that those kind of proactive, productive conversations continue. I don't think it helps to insinuate in any way, whether it's the feeling of the public in the run or not, that there was somehow a decision that was made to punish the members, the residents of the run because of a, an organizing effort. I think that that's false. I think that the fact that three other projects were also put on pause demonstrates that's false. And I don't think it helps the conversation move forward. I, I have only the greatest amount of respect for the leadership and the workers of Pittsburgh Water. And I know that they are doing everything that they can to, again, fix decades of disinvestment that have resulted in our infrastructure kind of crumbling at the same time, on top of increasing flooding, increase, the increasing intensity of storms because of climate change. I mean, just like the run getting hit from all angles, our water infrastructure, our sewer infrastructure, our built environment, our natural environment is getting hit from all angles as well. So, just wanted to state that for the record. I also wanted to state a correction. It was stated that a mayor was elected and then the road was canceled. What, what happened was, prior to any new mayor, prior to this current mayor being sworn in, the entire road project was defunded except for seven hundred thousand dollars, which was then put into trails. So, wanted to state that for a correction to the record. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so, just to clarify, I understand that the folks at this table, and I, I do not believe, like, sort of conspired together, however, when we talk about faith in government, and you have an underserved community that has been ignored and been asking for a flood mitigation project for over a decade, and then another project that does not benefit them comes to their community and they fight it, saying that they want the flooding, the flood mitigation project. And then they win their fight about the road, and then the flood mitigation project is taken away. That hurts people's faith in government. Whether or not it was the intention, that hurts people's faith in their government. Because they went to meeting after meeting for years, begging for this flood mitigation and then working through this flood mitigation, want, you know, having to deal with this road fight and the flood fight and told that they didn't, you know, and, 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 I mean, they, so much heartache went into just trying to get their flooding. And keep in mind, I want to say that I actually live up high on the hill on the run, so I don't get flooded. I just want to make that clear. I don't get flooded, we're good where I sit, right? This is the folks who live under the bridge. They live under three seventy-six, so they have a bridge falling on their head. They're having their, their, you know, basements flooded over and over and over again. These are, you know, people do not, that, that don't have money to replace their boiler every whatever, right? Few years, are replacing their boilers every few years. They're putting sump pumps in their basement, they have dead rats in their yard, right? So, when I, as their council representative, explain their disillusion with city government and our city authorities over this project, that is what I'm talking about. And, you know, I, I, I'm not even, to be honest with you, and this thing about the budget money is, is absolutely, because I myself personally, when I first came to council, moved a million dollars out of the Mon Oakland, out of the Four Mile Run project. So, this idea that the Mon Oakland Connector was somehow defunded before I got here is inaccurate. Maybe some, some money was moved out of it, but the project was certainly not defunded and it certainly was not canceled until this administration canceled it. So, I, I, I would, I, you know, I respectfully would ask that folks defer to my experience and the experience of my residents when it comes to this particular project. Anyway, I guess going forward, I would definitely ask, if Alka-Sand has ten million dollars that can go toward, right, you know, reimbursement or otherwise, that can go toward helping the folks in the run with their flood issues, whether that is, I don't know, green infrastructure that catches water that comes up, you know, out of the sewer, whether if it can't be sewer, if it can't be gray, or maybe just a combination? Maybe you can expand the sewer just on saline, like between Acorn and, 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 you know, just past Big Jim's? I don't know, again, I'm not the engineer, right? But if there's something that we can do that can allow us to, to access this Alka-Sand funding, I think we should do it. If there is something that can be done to, to, you know, present to the Army Corps, that, then they can, you know, identify funding. You know, obviously, this is, this flooding issue in the run has been going on for forever. So, you know, what's another couple of years? I don't know. Maybe it's another flood or two, I don't know. I mean, obviously, that will, I hope there isn't another flood. But if there is, boy, we're, we're gonna hear about it, that's for sure. So, I, you know, I, I know that this has been, has been a long, you know, this has been difficult for a long time. And I do appreciate you all, and, and, you know, I appreciate, you know, this sort of weird transition from like being just a member of the community to now being at this table and having these conversations for real, like, you know, in front of the public. So, thank you all for coming, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah. Yeah, so having exhausted the business of this post-agenda, this meeting is adjourned.